La plupart d'entre vous connaissent mon nom : Suresh Gaurav. Je suis le président du campagne de la paix et de sécurité de Southall. Nous avons organisé cette réunion à un point important de la campagne. Le mardi 20 et le mercredi 21, comme tous les autres. Une réunion judiciaire aura lieu à la Cour des Justes. Les tribunaux décideront si le Conseil Élingu a pris une décision qui pourrait être illégitime ou inacceptable en vendant ce temple à long terme pour le vishwa Hinduism. Pour Kendra, qui est un temple à côté de la porte. Vous avez vraiment besoin d'un biker ?
Non, non, nous pensons que...
Oh !
... il y a une situation...
Ok. Donc, si la décision va dans notre faveur, elle sera historique. Parce que pour la première fois dans longtemps, dans de nombreuses décennies, nous aurions défendu les autorités locales sur une décision où elle a déclaré qu'elle était finie. Où ils n'avaient pas prévu que les gens le défendraient ou que le campagne ait été lancée pour sauver ce bâtiment iconique. Si on échoue, cela a des conséquences très adverses pour notre communauté à Southall. Bien évidemment, nous regarderons la possibilité d'une appeal en fonction de ce que le juge dit. Mais cela peut aussi intégrer une campagne en fonction de la décision pour lancer quelque chose de différent en termes de vente de ce temple. Mais nous ferons une évaluation après le jugement qui viendra. Probablement pas le mardi 21, mais peut-être pour trois ou quatre jours. Nous ferons une décision dès que le J.R. sera terminé ou nous ferons une décision après l'élection. Nous devrons donc faire une évaluation de ce que sont les prochaines étapes, légalement et politiquement en relation avec la campagne. Mais l'autre raison pour laquelle ce cas est si important est parce qu'il y a un sentiment à Southall que en fait personne ne s'en soucie. Et c'est un état très drôle et triste. Et l'une des raisons est que chaque fois que nous prenons un acte historique ou une action comme celle-ci, nous ne recevons pas le soutien de la conseillère ou des politiciens avec nous, se tenant par derrière nous, disant que c'est injuste. Même s'ils croient que leur décision par le leadership est injuste. Et Southall est l'un des quelques endroits où je suis ici depuis 40 ans où pas un seul conseiller a pris le temps de faire appel à notre nom pour protéger les intérêts de la communauté. Et c'est un état triste. Les gens répondent donc à cela et disent : personne ne s'en soucie. Donc cette campagne et ce challenge au Conseil est vraiment crucial et critique. Ça dit : "Nous nous soucions du présent état de Southall et de la décision prise et de ses conséquences pour les deux." Ce temple n'est pas juste un bâtiment laid de briques et de moutons. Il a une histoire. Et sa histoire comprend des gens qui ont défendu le racisme. Ils protestaient ici en 1979. Et des gens ont été arrêtés en masse. 700 ou 345 ont été chargés. Blake Peach a été assassiné par le groupe spécial il y a presque 40 ans. Il y aura 40 ans à venir. Il y a eu des tentatives précédentes de vendre ce bâtiment. Et les gens ont commencé à se dire que ça marchait. Donc il a une histoire. Il y a des gens qui croient que le temple n'est pas un bâtiment privé. C'est un asset public dirigé par le Conseil à l'aide des habitants locaux. Et il devrait rester comme ça. Et cet asset est au sujet de la sécheresse d'assez qui a eu lieu ici depuis 1970. Nous avons produit un pamphlet ici qui explique le genre de sécheresse. Un massif saturé de sécheresse qui a eu lieu par les Conseils du travail et du bâtiment pendant des décennies. C'est le seul bâtiment qui, de la façon dont il peut être construit, va préserver la nature séculaire de ce temple. Où les gens, hommes et femmes, les villagers, les personnes sans affaire peuvent venir et l'utiliser et avoir les moyens. Et pour ces nombreuses raisons, c'est absolument critique de commencer à soutenir le challenge qui est en place et être là à la cour de justice le mardi 21 et le mercredi. Ce n'est pas une question entre les sollicitaires et le peuple. C'est une question publique où les gens doivent prendre le contrôle de ce temple. C'est très important. Les conséquences, si nous gagnons, sont réelles et légítimes en termes de ce que nous pouvons réaliser. Et si nous perdons, il y aura des précautions pour le temple, pour chaque communauté, surtout pour les personnes qui l'utilisent. Je pense que plus de 10 000 personnes l'utilisent pour des bénévoles, etc. Nous sommes donc en train de combattre pour un cause juste pour tous les raisons justes. Sans trop de soutien politique, je dois dire. Et c'est un état triste. Nous devrons surmonter ce challenge face à l'inégalité des gens qui sont légers. Je suis fatigué de voir des gens me dire : "Viens, viens, individu, je soutiens ton initiative, mais je suis assez craintif de défendre le leadership." Ou le leader du Conseil a dit et écrit un lettre à chaque conseiller disant : "Vous ne pouvez pas soutenir ça publiquement." Ils ont électrifié les gens de Southall. Ils ont électrifié les villes de Southall. Et c'est à l'heure de voir cette réaction chez les gens. Et ce n'est pas bon pour RMP de dire à nous : "En fait, si vous gagnez, je viendrai avec vous." C'est ce qu'il a dit quand nous avons élu. C'est juste une indifférence absolue. Mais cette campagne a été imaginaire. Elle a été challengée. Nous avons eu les gens ensemble. Nous avons établi un challenge légal. Et nous avons une chance fantastique de gagner le mardi 21 et le mercredi. La position légale du Conseil Élingu est assez misérable. Ils n'ont pas bougé depuis le moment où nous avons commencé le challenge en septembre. Ils ont pensé que nous gagnerions sur un seul round. En fait, il y a deux ou trois camps sur lesquels nous défendions. Et je crois, et je ne fais pas de prédictions, à part l'évaluation de l'impacts de l'égalité, même sur le lot de valeur communautaire ou de valeur sociale du bâtiment, plutôt que de la valeur commerciale, c'est quelque chose que nous pourrions gagner le mardi ou le mercredi. C'est remarquable. Et qui est-ce qui a cligné ? Un pensionnier de 83 ans qui a pris le contrôle de la puissance du Conseil avec tous ses ressources inférieures. Nous sommes donc à la crise dans notre histoire à Southall. Je ne veux pas continuer à parler de gens qui ne s'en soucient pas. En fait, beaucoup de gens s'en soucient de ce qui arrive à notre temple. Ce que nous devons faire est de l'utiliser pour galvaniser, mobiliser et expliquer et faire l'impact de ce que représente le temple pour les gens. Et nous l'avons fait. Regardez le challenge fantastique que nous avons créé quand nous avons occupé ça, mis notre flèche et arrêté le trafic. Tout ce qui a été fait par Jan Paul ou moi-même. Tous les gens sont venus, des centaines de gens sont venus et ont soutenu le vote. Il y a donc beaucoup de soutien. Et les challenges légales ne gagneront jamais à moins qu'il y ait un soutien public massif pour ça. Et le tribunal doit voir nos sentiments à l'intérieur de cette structure. Nous devons donc recouvrir ça. La dernière fois que nous sommes allés à la prière à la réunion, le juge a dit qu'il pouvait voir les gens de Southall ici. Donc elle est venue voir notre cas. Il y a eu cet impact. Et c'est ce que nous avons appris des campagnes que nous avons menées pendant quatre décennies émanant de ce temps parce qu'il a une histoire fantastique de défendre le pouvoir, le racisme et d'autres formes de progression. Donc c'est la connaissance du challenge qui se déroule. Et ça sera entendu cette semaine à la Cour de Justice. Tout d'abord, fantastique que nous ayez établi une campagne. Même plus fantastique que nous ayez mis le challenge légal dans la campagne. Et troisièmement, nous avons montré aux gens qu'il y a assez de compassion et d'attention et d'intégration dans ce temple pour nous faire venir ensemble pour défendre le challenge. Ce que je vais faire maintenant est ouvrir la réunion, faire que les gens parlent, poser n'importe quelle question qu'ils veulent.
Merci, Suresh. Peux-je accueillir tout le monde officiellement à la Cour de Justice ? Parce que, comme je disais, nous voulons garder le bâtiment ouvert pour le futur. C'est vraiment important que nous ayons autant de guests et de nouveaux gens venir dans le bâtiment.
Peux-je que les gens arrêtent de parler ?
Ok, merci. Allez-y. Encore une fois, je voudrais réitérer l'accueil à tout le monde qui a été donné leur temps pour sortir un jour assez froid. La campagne de la Cour de Justice, Suresh a touché quelques points clés. Je ne vais pas les répéter. Mais je pense que de mon côté, il y a des réussites vraiment importantes. Je travaille pour la Alliance de la Communauté de Southall. Nous sommes une charity. Ceci est notre salle. Nous avons été impliqués avec quelques partenaires depuis le premier jour en questionnant et en demandant pourquoi le Conseil Élingu veut vendre le temple principal d'un bâtiment iconique, il n'y a aucune autre parole pour ça. Nous avons été questionnés pendant des années de leur actions en essayant de supprimer les employés, les services et lentement mais sûrement quitter le bâtiment dans une situation où la vente était l'unique option. Pendant trois ans, nous avons battu nos têtes contre des murs, avons eu des réunions et vraiment pas allé où que. Puis vers le milieu de l'année dernière, nous avons appelé Suresh. Nous avons eu une réunion à un restaurant local, comme vous le faites. Et vraiment, c'était la première fois que nous avons commencé à penser à la stratégie légale. Pas seulement avoir des réunions, pas seulement mobiliser les résidents. Mais en fait, qu'est-ce qu'il y a que nous pouvons faire légalement qui pourrait hurtre le Conseil Élingu ? Dans les deux ou trois mois, Suresh nous a contactés avec des collègues du Centre de Law Lambert, de leur unité de droit public, des sollicitaires et des barristers. En décembre 2017, le cas a été soumis à la cour. En très peu de temps, nous sommes devenus des lobbys d'une certaine manière en campagnant sur ces questions à l'initiative d'un challenge légal contre le Conseil Élingu. Passons à la suite, deux mois. Au début de l'année, nous avons eu une proteste merveilleuse ici. Ça a été, tant que ça galvanisait et a rassemblé différentes personnes et groupes, c'était vraiment fun. Nous avons, en fait, pour la première fois dans très longtemps, nous nous sommes rendus compte de notre défense des autorités publiques. C'était, je pense, un succès massif pour le legacy de ce que ça a montré. Que les gens peuvent faire la différence dans notre région et dans nos communautés. Que nous avons une voix, que nous avons une unité, que nous avons diversité. Toutes ces choses étaient évidentes le jour. Passons maintenant à quelques mois. Nous sommes maintenant en été. Suresh a mentionné que nous avons une réunion à la Cour dans deux jours. Le cas a été listé pendant deux jours, le 4 et le 5 juillet. Nous pensons, et nous verrons plus demain matin, nous pensons qu'il y a une grande chance que le cas sera fait le 4, un jour. Nous gardons donc nos options ouvertes. Mais nous serons guidés par ce que nos barristers et notre équipe légale nous ont proposé. Il y a deux problèmes principaux dans le cas. Le premier problème concerne ce que certaines personnes appellent "valeur pour l'argent". Mais vraiment, c'est ce sujet. Questionner quand le Conseil Élingu cherchait à vendre ce bâtiment, quand le Conseil Élingu cherchait à prendre ses décisions, ont-ils pris en compte toutes les considérations matérielles, tous les facteurs ? Ou ont-ils juste regardé l'argent ? Nous savons qu'ils ont regardé seulement l'argent. C'est la seule chose qu'ils étaient intéressés par. Et pour ceux qui sont venus pour la première fois, le Conseil Élingu a offert de vendre ce bâtiment, ce bâtiment massif et historique pour plus de 2 millions de pounds pour le temple derrière nous. 2 millions de pounds. Nous avons fait des recherches et nous avons trouvé des bâtiments, des magasins dans cette partie de Southall et dans l'autre partie qui étaient vendus pour environ ça. Juste des unités. Vous vous demandez où est la logique financière ? Qu'est-ce que le Conseil Élingu accomplira en vendant ce bâtiment pour une telle petite quantité ? Ça n'a jamais sensé. C'est le premier problème qui va venir. Le deuxième problème est celui que, comme Suresh l'a dit, nous sommes confiants. Je ne veux pas jinxer. Vous savez, vous ne pouvez jamais être 100% sûr. Mais nous sommes vraiment confiants sur leur échec, sur le fait que le Conseil Élingu n'a pas fait une évaluation de l'impact de la vente sur tous les utilisateurs, les résidents, les groupes et d'autres à Southall. C'est quelque chose qu'ils doivent faire par la loi. Ils prétendent avoir fait quelque chose. Et nous, les habitants qui ont travaillé dans le bâtiment, savons qu'ils ne l'ont pas fait. Ils ont menti. Leur comportement dans le cas a été appalant. Leur sollicitaires et leur équipe légale ont été absolument disgraceux. Il n'y a pas de moyen de le cacher. Tout point vers, comme je l'ai dit, les faiblesses de leur cas. C'est donc les deux problèmes : "valeur pour l'argent", l'évaluation de l'impact de l'égalité et s'ils ont adhéré ou non. C'est ce que le juge va regarder le mardi. Nous espérons qu'il ou elle prendra la décision sensible et la bonne basée sur les faits qui seront dans notre faveur. En termes de practicalité, j'ai eu beaucoup de gens intéressés à venir à la cour, particulièrement le mardi. Nous avons en fait embauché un bus mini qui partirait de Southall vers 7h30. Donc s'il y a quelqu'un qui veut venir, laissez-moi savoir. Nous avons un espace limité. Et ce que je veux faire est prioriser peut-être les supporters plus âgés de la campagne ou ceux avec des problèmes de mobilité. Et le reste de nous ferons notre chemin séparément à Londres. Je pense que c'est la chose juste à faire. Donc s'il y a quelqu'un qui veut venir, laissez-nous savoir. Nous allons essayer de vous accommoder le jour. La dernière chose que je dirais serait... Je suis un homme modeste et silencieux. Merci énorme à Suresh pour toute sa aide, ses efforts, son esprit et son humour. Parce que vous avez besoin de ça quand vous êtes contre ces gens. Je pense que nous pouvons tous rejoindre un coup d'applaudissements à Suresh. Campagnes et campagnes réussies ne se passent pas par la chance. Vous avez besoin des bons gens et de la bonne personne en charge. Et je pense que nous avons bien compris. Maintenant, en ce qui concerne le reste du jour, nous espérons que nous aurons une contribution de l'un de nos membres locaux du Parlement. Nous verrons, la nuit est toujours jeune. Mais nous avons une agenda assez fluide. Est-ce que nous passons à des gens pour faire des commentaires et des contributions ?
Merci. Mes invités ont fait des gains pour ceux d'entre vous qui connaissent. Je viens du président de l'Alliance de la Communauté de Southall et aussi le directeur général de l'Association des Handeliers Indiens, le grand prêt de Southall France. Je dois dire le titre complet parce que sinon vous pourriez penser à qui vous parlez. Je suis très heureux. Tout d'abord, je répète les sentiments que Jan Paul a exprimés sur Suresh étant la bonne personne à l'heure correcte pour aider dans cette campagne. Parce que nous avons certainement besoin de toute la aide que nous pouvons obtenir. Et vous n'arrivez pas avec plus d'expérience, Suresh. Il a une grande expérience dans les campagnes réussies. Et nous espérons que c'est une autre qui va ajouter à sa CV. Une qui sera également fâleuse avec toutes les autres principales campagnes qu'il a menées. C'est la première chose. Je ne pensais pas que nous allions devoir faire ça 20 ans plus tard encore parce que nous avons dû campagner pour arrêter la vente de ce temple à Southall il y a plus de deux décennies. Quand il était vendu par les conservateurs à l'époque. Et la vente était opposée par John Cudmore du groupe du travail et ses collègues. Et après les élections, à cette période, je pense que c'était la mi-90s, peu importe. 94. Merci pour la gratoisie. L'un de nos ex-conseillers est toujours en bonne main pour quelque chose. Il a donc pris la marche et a fait partie du Conseil d'Entreprise West London. Il m'a aussi dit : "Vous voulez la marche ? Qu'est-ce que nous pouvons faire ?" Nous avons donc impliqué le Conseil d'Entreprise West London. Phil Blackburn et Shami Adams avaient une politique au Conseil à l'époque. Nous avons investi plus de 1 million de pounds. Le prochain pas est venu ici, l'ouvrir à la communauté pour l'apprentissage et l'entreprise et rapprocher les gens de l'emploi. Ça a de nouveau été un bâtiment cité comme ça il l'était avec le Conseil. Je dis ça maintenant parce que c'est une chose que le leader du Conseil dit : "Ce n'est pas un asset communautaire." Ça a été ainsi et ça a été depuis les 90s. Nous n'avons pas été trompés. Nous ne vous trompons pas quand nous disons que c'est un bâtiment communautaire ou un bâtiment de intérêt communautaire que la communauté l'utilise. Phil Blackburn a vu 1 million de pounds et il a continué à travailler. Quand leurs fonds s'ont réparés, le Partnership de la Regénération de Southall est venu avec le Conseil impliqué et les gens... "locator" je crois est la bonne parole pour les gens qui cherchaient de la habitude, etc. Ça a été utilisé à l'époque. Ça a été... les gens sont venus ici encore. Ça a été une chirurgie pour les conseillers. Si les conseillers disent qu'ils ne font pas partie de la communauté, encore une fois, je pose la question : "Est-ce qu'ils ne font pas partie de la communauté ?" Le Conseil local, incluant l'AFL, ils utilisaient tous ce bâtiment. Et ils disent que ce n'est pas un bâtiment pour la communauté. Le local MP utilise aussi par Cabra Days, pas Rindesharam. Je parle de Cabra Days. Il a utilisé ce bâtiment. Donc est-ce que ce bâtiment n'est pas une partie de la utilisation de la communauté ? Puis nous parlons d'une autre chose qui est en cours parce que nous avons utilisé ce bâtiment et c'est notre headquarters. Nous avons essayé de l'apprécier. Nous avons inscrit notre organisation ici. Si vous regardez notre site web pour l'Alliance de la Communauté de Southall, vous verrez que c'est un bureau inscrit, le temple de Southall. Même quand nous avons été déplacés, nous avons toujours gardé ça comme bureau. Ils nous ont donné un petit bureau en haut par un petit feu. Ça n'a pas vraiment d'importance parce que nous pouvions utiliser n'importe quel espace. Et c'est la unique de Southall que tout le monde sent qu'il a un peu d'espace. La unique de ce temple à Southall, tout le monde sent qu'il appartient à eux. Et c'est comme ça qu'il devrait rester. C'était la première accusation qui a été faite comme bâtiment communautaire, nous le croyons. La deuxième est qu'ils veulent augmenter les fonds pour aider les personnes vulnérables. Nous leur avons donc encore dit que les gens qui utilisent ces réfugiés, les asylum seekers, les homeless, les unemployed, les gens qui sont désespérés pour la aide, qui viennent par ces doors, ils ne sont pas vulnérables. Nous avons vendu tous les bâtiments de l'Albert Day Centre, n'étaient-ils pas des personnes vulnérables ? Nous avons puré les châtons et les halls, nous avons puré Hannah Brockway. Et la liste continue, vous avez la liste devant vous. N'étaient-ils pas des personnes vulnérables ? Est-ce qu'il y a un type magique de chiffres et de figures que tout d'un coup le leader du Conseil Élingu connaît ? Les gens viennent et vont à ces portes ici. Parfois en frustration parce que les portes sont fermées parce que c'est de nouveau une dismissal constructive, une destruction constructive des organisations. Vous supprimez la sécurité. Vous purlez le parking de voiture, vous purlez même le point d'assemblée de feu. Il n'y a que accès aux personnes handicapées de là où vous pouvez sortir d'une voiture et entrer dans ce bâtiment. Vous purlez ça. Sans aucune concentration, sans aucun accord. Et quand nous avons demandé quel était l'agreement, c'était un accord légal. Comment un Conseil a un arrangement avec un temple à côté de la porte et ignore complètement les utilisateurs de ce bâtiment ? Nous leur posons encore une question. Il n'y a pas de réponse. Il y a un nombre de choses qu'ils ont fait une après l'autre pour nous sortir de là. Pour nous purler. Ils ont parlé d'un événement important, d'un événement réussi. Nous avons mis un pancake à l'extérieur sur la balconie. Vous savez ce qu'ils ont fait ? Ils ont en fait mis un avertissement là-dedans, à l'intérieur de l'office, ils ont pris le bureau, ils sont entrés là sans la permission des utilisateurs et ont mis un avertissement là : "Ne passez pas sur la balconie, ce n'est pas permis." Granville est venu à l'esprit, des signes similaires : "Restez dans votre chambre, même s'il y a un feu." Donc si il y a un feu, il ne devrait pas sortir, il ne devrait pas aller sur la balconie pour fuir. Quelle position ridicule ! Quelle position ridicule ! Les gens ne pensent même pas avant de parler, pensent avant de rédiger. Je espérais certainement être là avec beaucoup de vous. Je pourrais parler toute la nuit. Je vous assure que vous voulez dire quelques mots. L'homme de 83 ans. Je suis vraiment fâleux de lui. Très fâleux de lui. Il est membre de l'Association des Handeliers Indiens et ils le savent tous à Southall. Les conseillers Élingu le savent parce qu'ils essaient d'intimider. Ils essaient d'utiliser les trucs sales, les politiques sales de la politique pindabi. Ils essaient d'intimider l'homme. "As-tu oublié que nous avons ta habitude ?" "As-tu oublié ce que le Conseil Élingu a fait pour toi ?" Ils threatenent d'une façon que si tu fais ça, il perdra ça. Et grâce à l'assurance de Suresh et de notre équipe légale, il sait que ses intérêts seront protégés. Ils essaient d'intimider. Et lui est l'un des utilisateurs réguliers de ce bâtiment. MWAS qui fournit des conseils d'intégration à base de coût. Il y a très peu d'organisations ici qui font ça. Il y a plein de lawyers qui gagnent beaucoup d'argent. MWAS fournit ça et il est reconnaissant de ça. Il est reconnaissant d'être parti de l'SCA, reconnaissant d'être parti de MWAS et absolument un foot soldat pour l'IW. Je suis très fâleux de lui. Il était ici avant. Il est parti parce que les deux jours suivants, il a à abandonner sa pauvre femme parce qu'elle ne fonctionne pas aussi bien. Donc il essaie de faire les meilleures arrangements. Il a dit : "D'accord, vous avez l'heure du soir parce que vous serez avec nous les deux jours suivants." Il est là en esprit, il voulait passer son message à tous. Et merci d'être venu et de donner le soutien. Et je souhaite à tous un grand succès le 4 et le 5. Merci.
Donc l'aide est là. Ce que je veux informer les gens est... Ils disent : "Le Conseil va ? Allez-y." "Va à Jobserver ? Allez-y." "Allez-y ? Allez-y." Où ils vont ? Ils ne le savent même pas. C'est ce qui aide l'aide. Il le sait et il est là. 9-2-1, généralement. Ce n'est pas un emploi payé. Donc je fais ça avec le soutien de l'SCA. Donc, s'il vous plaît, informez vos groupes. De toute forme, en ligne, en job, en CV preparation, Jobserver, tout. Revenus HR, tout ce que nous pouvons faire. C'est l'aide avec le soutien de l'SCA.
Indraj? Merci, Suresh. Je pense que c'est juste de l'attacher. Nous sommes habitués à ça dans cette communauté. Sinon vous ne l'obtenez pas. Mon nom est Indraj Singija. Je suis un conseiller. Je pense que je suis le bon Suresh. J'ai été assis à l'épaule avec la communauté quand l'ancien M.P. voulait vendre ce temple à Southall. En conséquence, je pense que j'ai été isolé après ça. Et j'ai payé un prix important politiquement dans le groupe du travail pour la décision que j'ai prise à l'époque. Et je pense que c'était la bonne. Si je devais le faire encore, je le ferai aujourd'hui. Et ce que je voudrais dire est que j'ai eu Capule Julian Bell comme leader du Conseil sur ce même sujet en partie lors d'une réunion l'an dernier. Où j'ai en fait lui demandé, je l'ai mis au point en disant : "Comment peux-je justifier l'invitation du gouvernement conservateur à sauver le hôpital de Southall avec vous et le reste de la communauté quand je dois vous combattre avec la même communauté pour sauver le temple à Southall pour les bénéfices de la communauté ?" Et il n'y avait pas de réponse. C'était une réponse non sensible dans laquelle il a dit qu'il a rencontré toutes les parties intéressantes représentant les intérêts de la communauté de Southall. Et j'ai pris le téléphone après cette réunion et j'ai vérifié avec deux ou trois personnes qui représentent cette communauté. Ils étaient là. Et ils m'ont dit franc que il refuse de nous rencontrer. Pas seulement ça, il a arrêté le député leader de leur meeting qui était nouvellement élu, Yvonne Johnson. Et le gars précédent, Rajithi, qui est en fait membre de cette communauté, vit ici localement, refuse de nous rencontrer. Donc, je suis dans ce temple avec l'ancien MP. Piana Cabra utilisait pour tenir ses chirurgies ici. D'accord ? J'ai soutenu lui comme conseiller, j'ai fait beaucoup de choses dans cette communauté. Je l'ai battu en 1979. Ma mère, mon oncle maternel, était le capitaine du club de hockey Lions. Nous étions dans cette partie de la route en combat contre la National Front. Et j'ai fait une blague quand je suis venu ici. Je pensais que je devais brûler ce lieu avec le reste des jeunes à l'époque. Et vous savez, ça nous ramène des souvenirs. Nous voulons préserver ce que ce bâtiment représente pour certains d'entre nous qui étaient là à l'époque. Je sais que d'autres personnes sont venues plus tard et ont été là avant moi. Ça signifie la naissance d'un nombre d'organisations, d'organisations de self-help qui existent. Certaines, comme le groupe de volonté de Southall, Rosa Hilda, les Sisters Black de Southall, les droits de Southall, le mouvement des jeunes de Southall, l'association de la habitation des clubs, la liste continue. Il y a un nombre d'organisations. Sa naissance à ce temple n'avait pas été due à la résistance de la communauté. So we need to look at ourselves as to what’s happening politically within our confines, I mean, it’s a shame. None of the Labour councillors, I have to say Labour, that all Labour in this community, have the audacity, or even, sorry, audacity is the wrong word, have the sort of courage to come and talk to fellow members of the community. This is an injustice that’s been done to the community, why is it, as I was saying, put it, 20 years on, we have to fight the same old battle all over again, we shouldn’t have to, we don’t need to, we don’t need this. And if we were to lose on Wednesday or Thursday next, this week, I think the battle will continue. I will be there, shoulder to shoulder with the rest of the community.
Hi, my name’s Man. My mother was a social worker, a team leader here in Southall many years ago. I came to this beautiful building when I was young and we did a dance workshop here. And I’m amazed that it’s been sold, I think it’s just terrible, and I really wish you well with your struggle. I want to just tell you about our story. My mother’s pension, she’s a pensioner from Eiling Council, and her pension keeps being stopped by Eiling Council. She’s at the employment tribunal, we’ve got a hearing next week. They refuse to mediate, we won all the last hearings because they’re doing it to her, they’re reducing her pension, and they’re stopping her pension, and they’re not doing it to anyone else. And I think it’s wrong to discriminate against old people and women and women of colour. And I have some leaflets if anyone’s interested, because I’m with you in your struggle, because we’re facing the same thing. They refuse to negotiate, the judge told them that they should mediate and talk to us, but they refuse. They’d rather spend thousands and thousands of pounds in court to beat her because they know she’s a little old lady and that they can get away with it. And I think it’s wrong, and I think it’s a waste of public money, and so this is what they’re doing with the money that they’re getting from you. And I’m sorry, but it’s really wrong. And I have some leaflets if anyone’s interested, and I wish you all the best with your struggle, it’s our struggle as well.
Can we ask a question?
Sure, sure, sure.
What is the reason, ma’am, of them stopping the pension? If your mother’s legally entitled to the pension, if she’s worked the years...
It’s discrimination, it’s race and sex discrimination because she went to an employment tribunal against them. And so they carry on doing it, and because she had faced an incident of sex discrimination, one or two people here do know about the case. And I’ve got some information, I’ve got a petition here if anyone wants to sign it. It’s about stop elderly abuse, stop abuse against old people because it’s invisible abuse. And this is what they’re doing with the money, you know, they’re just kicking little old ladies in court.
Thank you. If people want to know where more, where is the next, where is the tribunal hearing?
The tribunal hearing. The tribunal hearing is Central London Employment Tribunal. I’ve got my email and some information if anyone’s interested here, it’s in two weeks’ time.
If people want to know, can I give them your email address? So just email me or contact me or something like that. Are there any other people who want to say anything, just quickly? Medium, do you want to come? Who gives a chance? No, no, you’ve, someone is booking, please, it can see that.
Hi, I wanted to just say that I wasn’t here when the demonstrations through Southall and the anti-racist movement where Blair Peach died, but the director, Prakna Patel, was, and she set up Southall Black Sisters, and that’s where I’m from. I’ve been with the organisation now just over 35 years. And I think that what the state is doing is that it’s trying to get rid of public spaces in terms of communities, and trying to disperse us separately along religious lines so that we then segregate differently and we can’t come together. So it’s trying to break up our kind of fight in terms of the rights of minorities in this country, and women have been part of that as well. At Southall Black Sisters, we’ve been part of surviving here for many years, taking Eiling Council as well to court, when they didn’t follow the impact assessment either, we won on that case as well. And that ended up with them forking out thousands and thousands of pounds for our court costs as well as others. So it’s just that, I agree that there’s nobody in the council who are thinking straight, whoever their advisers are are very wrong. And I think it’s really important us, us as community, both men and women, we need to get up and say enough is enough, and that we’re going to fight, we’re not going to sit down quietly and let them walk over us. And I think it’s really important to do that, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have your hand up, you have an assessment, or you have your hand up as well? Just put your hand up if you want to speak, so. Or if there are any questions you want to ask about the case?
So I don’t know about the pension arrangements for Eiling Council, but I do know that they have privatised the administration and the pensions, so it’s being run by a private company. And the decisions, it seems to me, about planning are almost automatically in support of private investors of different companies who want to make money, who want to invest, and all of that. And that’s not just in Eiling Council, but that’s fairly systematic. So next door to this building, they want to have, well, there’s an application for a 23-storey tower block. And we know about the Southall Gas Works, or any building that’s near the Crossrail, so it’s got the potential of making millions of pounds of profit, is up for grabs by the private developers. So the whole way in which the system is working at the moment is to disempower people. It’s as though the council isn’t there to represent the people, the council is just administrating what’s going on. It’s administrating government cuts, it’s administrating private developers’ applications. And I can remember, probably a lot of you can, when council planners, they actually planned, they were there to look at how things should be. Now these guys are just there with a big rubber stamp, and council officers are just steering the councillors into what they should do on a whole series of issues, one of the worst scandals is what’s happening with social care at the moment. So there are so many different issues, and undeniably is that we need to have some empowerment of the people. People need to feel they can work collectively, do things collectively, their voice can be heard if we, if we sit together. And we have got next year the anniversary of April 1979 event coming up. And just to say, we organised another anniversary event a couple of days ago about a women’s strike in Redford, which was 42 years ago, and the room was full of not only women who took part in that strike, but their families. Because it was so important, how several say, it was so important in the lives of these people. And I think that it’s not only those of us who remember it, 79, but people’s children and their families will remember it. And I think there is the opportunity to have a big anniversary event, and like we’re doing with the town hall, to remind people that they do have a voice, that they stand together and they’re strong. And to me, that’s what the fight around this town hall is all about.
Just a few words, I think the reason I’m here, we had a preview as to what was going to happen here in relation to what the council tried to do with the sale of the Southall library. And we did a campaign or set of meetings to try to save the Dominion Centre. Other than the Dominion Centre, this place is the only community asset we’ve got that. There’s a kind of a brutal assault on community assets. And I want to develop this theme a bit further in terms of the context. The context is the brutal assault on community assets, a particular strategy in my judgement to divide communities along religion, race, et cetera. In the context of the Dominion Centre, there had been a development called the TRS Development. In order to get the development through, TRS had promised Eiling Council that they would provide space for community as well as for a library. And yet, out of nowhere, Eiling Council decided to relocate the library to Dominion Centre. Suddenly, the whole system and the political leadership, and we’re talking about the Labour leadership here, had collective amnesia. Reports that were going through the system, suddenly, there was a gap. And that’s the kind of thing that’s happening in the context of this place.
Harpal asked me, I know the...
Yeah, and we have the same old suspects, unfortunately. You know, when you talk about the axis of evil, we’ve got an axis of relationships, of councillors and certain organisations, well-established organisations in this town. What has attracted me to this particular campaign is the fact that the people, firstly, they come from different walks of life, different organisations. They’re, it’s based on a set of principles, we will not be divided. It is not a single-person campaign, it’s a collective kind of decision-making. And in that sense, they’re having it, I believe, they’re trying to divide, and I walk around in many community organisations. Our MP, Vrindesh Sharma, is an absolute disgrace. He, when I last, other than this absurd notion that he will support us when we win the case legally, he, his position as far as last week was, “All of us are rhetoric”, is the word he used a number of times. He refuses, given the level of thinking that he has, that this, the court hearing, the legal case, is not rhetoric. It is based on substantive evidence. There is a linkage between the MP, the leader of the council, the deputy leader. It is appalling, and people in the temple are linked to the people in the Indian Workers’ Association. We have, against all the odds, I think, taken a position that we, it is not about Hindu, Sikh, Muslim, etc, religious thing. They’re trying to kind of make it go that way in order to kind of fuel kind of a public misinformation. And that, we are not, not going to fall into that particular trap. So one of the issues is about this khaliq. It is amazing that the council officers, they suddenly have no conscience. We don’t see a whistle blower in our case at all. Evidence is sitting there which will support a community case. The councillors have been told not to support. But we have an example here of a councillor who felt morally, ethically, principally that the community had a right position. After all, we elect our representatives, they should be looking at the case that the community has. These councillors, and they’re all Labour councillors, they are aware they’re going to be elected year in, year out. And they have demoralised community organisations, they consider it an automatic vote to bank Southall, and this has been going on for generations. But they are certainly, in my judgement, having that many people, they’re shaken by the solidarity, by the focus of the people in the campaign. Because, and they have been unable to target an individual, nobody, nobody they have taken one after another. They’ve been unable to do that. We need to make this campaign strong. I believe, I am asking people to join us tomorrow, the day after tomorrow, sorry, and also in the subsequent meetings, because this has not just finished. We will win, I’m confident, but that should be the start of the exposure of the kind of illegal acts that they have committed. The lack of transparency, the lack of accountability, I think that should not go unpunished, that is the work after the campaign.
Thank you very much. There are a couple of other speakers, Kusum, do you have your hand up? Listen, don’t feel forced, if you don’t want to say anything, you don’t have to, but if you have to, I’m going to call you, okay? Just a couple of minutes, and then Joe and Robby.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Kusum Parashar, and I’ve lived in the borough of Ealing for the past 48 years, and in Southall for 47 years. And I’ve seen it all, what Eiling Council have done and doing now. Now, all these councillors, they are told by Julian Bell not to attend any single meeting organised by this group. And a letter emailed, and all the councillors have spoken to them. Now, the thing is, we are here in a fight, we are all in solidarity to fight with this council. We have ex-councillors here, we have brilliant community leaders, all are in solidarity to fight with this council. Now, we have chairman, ex-chairman, Mr. Baines, Suresh, Robbie James, and all these leaders, Banraj, myself, we’ve been in this fight for a long time with this Labour Group and Eiling Council. Now, the problem here is, we have to be in the Royal Court of Justice on 4th of July to fight this case and make sure we win. And if we don’t win, we’ll go ahead with our appeals until we win this case. Because all the communities are here, minority communities, they are suffering very badly and they don’t care what happens, they just don’t care. I was here when Blair Peach died, I was here in the peaceful sitting demonstration just outside town hall. And it started with all Asian women sitting by the town hall, and a national friend were allowed to walk in to give a public speech. And public speech, there are only two people from public in this town hall. And there were 5,000 police here to let them come here to give a public speech. And in that fight, Blair Peach died. And I’m from that time, living in Southall, fighting for minority communities, and we won’t give in until we win this case. I used to run my business in this Southall Town Hall, teaching English as a second language to Somali women, to ethnic minority women, or newly arrivals, they used to come and learn English here. Just about three years ago, I had to close it down because they keep increasing my rent. And I had a little office upstairs, and they didn’t fix the computers, they didn’t give us enough facilities because then you really care who’s coming here to learn English. So this is the situation, we are in solidarity, we will fight until we win this case with Eiling Council. Thank you very much.
When we talk about the National Front coming to Southall Town Hall, I remember that day very clearly, I was about 17, 17 years old. We thought that we would bring our own politicians in, who will stand for our belief and for our rights. But apparently, we thought wrong, because people like Mr. Sharma, people like Rajithi, they have, they’re running a corrupt system. I’m sorry to use the word corrupt, because that’s all I keep hearing, that they actually bully... That they actually bully people into their way of thinking. Now, we've just chosen two new councillors and they backed off from us. So they've obviously been told. And we asked them, when they said that they wanted to become the representatives of Southall Broadway, we told them that you have to come to the meeting in Southall Town Hall, to say Southall Town Hall. Now, three times, they've let us down. So this just goes to show, our councillors, our leaders, they're all hypocrites. They're all in it for themselves. And everybody's, there's a lot of brown envelopes roaming around in Southall. Thank you.
Abtar and that you, yeah?
Abtar, Abtar Upar, local resident. Friends, brother and sister. I came to this country in nineteen sixty-three. At that time, we had a large community centre in Southall. It was a Dominion Centre, there was Shetland Hall. But it, by it, I mean, the public assets really snatched from public and killed to the individual child. And that's sad. Why? There is not a much resistance from the public. I'm not saying that there is no resistance at all. But there is not a strong resistance from the people from the public. I'm just reading the names of the different organisations. There is no participation from the religious organisation at all. Now, Southall Bhutara, a city temple. It's the largest city temple outside India. But it is openly, they are part and parcel of the local community. And we shouldn't ignore them. So basically, what I'm saying, there is not a much resistance from the public. It's Southall Town Hall, it has a local history. And we must still, and we must resist strongly. Legal, yes, of course legally as well. But I think the strength above the people is more important than the legal protection. Thanks.
Ravi, then he? Do you have your hand up quite?
My name is Ravi Jain. I think what Balra said is talking about the history. But if you look at the history in Southall, it attracted considerable amount of money from central government. If you look at carefully, Section eleven, you may or may not remember.
Yes.
Greatly misuse. Even the cleaner was for our country. Although Section eleven was created to help Commonwealth immigrants. Why is it important? Because when, when its misuse was identified, Section eleven was terminated. Not only for Ealing, but nationally. Because Leicester and Ealing were the greatest misuse of that one. Cases like teachers on Scale two. They, oh sorry, Scale one, or Section eleven. Nobody was promoted to Scale two because enough money wasn't coming. So if you talk to Asian teachers at that time in schools, they will identify that one. Then the other misuse was Arban Programme. Dominion was built using Arban Programme. That time, leader of the council opposed it. He bitterly opposed it. He refused to sign the deal. Until we had to persuade Hazar Time to come to Southall and force the local authority leader to sign the deal. Most of the staff in Dominion was Section eleven. Even more than what it was intended. Originally, library was supposed to be on the first floor of the centre. And we asked for the drawings, the leader of the council, neighbour, John Cutmore. He said, "It will cost us ten thousand pound to get the drawings." It's crazy. Money was covered from Arban Programme. Why it can't be released through community? But I also mentioned about TRS. It went through committee stages. It was approved by the Labour Party Group in Southall. Four thousand square feet was supposed to be created. That included community uses. It disappeared. Now, Ealing Council is negotiating so that the land behind IWA Southall and Dominion could be sold. So misuse of resources is nothing new in this authority. GNC, after its demise, transferred massive amount of funding for local organisation. That funding was used for four years for Ealing Council to support. However, when Maggie Thatcher closed down all the advice-giving centres, all the advice-giving centres, in Ealing, we saw the similar pattern. All the legal advice centres were closed down. Or anybody which will increase the pressure on local authority, we closed down. In this centre, we had the housing advisory service by Ealing. Even that was closed down. Because they didn't want any further pressure on Ealing. So the, the neglect of Southall is nothing new. The leaders, we hope, will come forward and become our guardian and guardian of the community. In fact, join the Labour Party to keep their position. The party is a national politics. That they are dividing the community in religious sections. Because religious sections are not the community activists. They are business people who have made alignment. And that alignment works for business and politics. We need to understand that one. And unless we understand that one, we are not going to go forward. Anybody who challenges that hedge money will come to protest. And nature is one of that example. So I think we need to keep this struggle going. And as Suraj said, that is a starting point for a new campaign to ensure our political representatives are answerable to us, not the leadership or leadership dictates.
Thank you. For the first council or the saving?
For myself. So, I first came to Southall in nineteen seventy-eight. And one of the reasons I came was to work for Ravi. I think I was the not very good press officer for the National Association for Asian Youth, which sadly doesn't exist anymore, hasn't existed for a long, long time. But it gave me this incredible insight into the community. And of course, in nineteen seventy-nine, I found myself as a not very good press officer, suddenly having to churn out information about what was happening in Southall with, with the threat of the National Front coming here and obviously, doing a lot of work around that. And I, the one of the things that struck me about this was it was a really vibrant, but it was a very political community. A working-class community rooted in the trade unions with a fantastic welcoming tradition. So whatever march came through this area, the People's March for Job, people threw out, opened their homes. There was food on, you know, they put people up, they put food out there and so on. And a lot of that has changed. And I think it's a real sadness to me that that sort of leftist kind of socialist type tradition that existed in this community has sort of evaporated. There are still elements. And that's, a lot of that is in the people in this room who've held on to it and have been involved in, as I've been, in trying to save this Town Hall. Because to me, this Town Hall is not just a building. It's about that political heritage. It's the political heritage of solidarity, of community, of standing together, of fighting for justice. And I think that's what we're trying to, to hold on to here. I just wanted to say something about the councillors. So I've been involved for the last six years in Ealing Saver NHS, trying to save Ealing Hospital. And we've had a rocky road with the councillors. Unfortunately, sometimes when you're in campaigns, you have to work with people that a lot of people in this room don't like, including Julian Bell and some of the other councillors who appear to have, maybe not so much of a commitment to Southall, but do have a commitment to the hospital. And one of the problems in campaigns is sometimes you have to put aside those differences in order to work with them. That doesn't mean you change what you believe in or your, your principles. But in terms of the new councillors, a whole, there are a whole load of new councillors that have been elected. And so I was speaking to one of the councillors about now on a committee, saying, "I hope you're going to speak up for the campaign or for the issues on the committee." And he was very determined. And then suddenly, I heard he hadn't said anything at all at that committee meeting. And what it is, is that, I don't know if it's intimidation, but they don't get any training, so they feel very vulnerable when they're a new councillor. They don't get the kind of stuff that was probably around in Jip when you were doing it, where I think that wasn't there either. But they don't get that support. And so if they're told, "You can't do something", they feel a little bit insecure about doing anything. And I agree that I'm disappointed. There's a couple of councillors I would have expected to be here. I am going to talk to them afterwards, because I'm very disappointed they're not here. But clearly, because they're very new, they are succumbing to that kind of intimidation that does exist. And there is bullying, very much bullying in the Labour Group. And I guess the only way to cut through that is to show people that they can be supported by people here. And we obviously need to try to do that. Not because we, we hold on to our principles and what we're trying to do and we want people elected for this community to stand up for it. We all know we've got the most hopeless MP we've never had. I suppose in his day, Sid Bigwell was quite, quite good at times, even though I might have disagreed with him. At times...
Take the mic away.
At times. But we never really had a real community-based MP. And I would love to see Southall having the kind of MP that's prepared to stand up and fight, in the same way that someone like John McDonnell does. But we're going away from that.
Thank you. You took your second words?
Yes, hello all. How are you doing today? It's been hot. Nice day today?
It's getting hotter.
Yeah, I think the tone is the same, you know, history, heritage, culture, the place it is. And then if you come down, then you say, "It's the last resort. If we lose this one, I think what alternative do we have? I'm not sure." If I'm coming from the Somali community, I know if this place is closed, I don't know where our community will turn up and get help. That is for sure. Mr. Baines, the Chairman of Southall Community Alliance, you know? Mr. John, Mr. John Bar, knows it. How many people come through this door every Tuesday? And then we have a lot of issues. Now, the latest is universal tax credit. Even the lawyers, even the advisers, even the, when the House of Commons is standing, they lead the committee here and they say, "Nobody can understand it." Everybody is confused. Now, we're in this, we are here because not because of business, we are not making money out of it, but just community for community service. Intended. From Southall, people coming from Hes, Mr. John Bar knows, people coming even after we leave. Some people are still coming up for it, that the demand is too high. So we have Mr. Suraj, you know how active he is. Mr. Baines, Southall, I mean, Black Sisters, Lee. We are every time fighting for community resources, premises. You know how this campaign, it has been a lot of things for the common people than you say the representative maybe, we're doing a lot. So we have to galvanise this common ground of community service, community engagement, and keeping our heritage together. That is something we can be proud of. From nineteen seventy-seven, I was not here, but when Mr. Baines hits from nineteen seventy-seven, when this place need for the community in Southall, and still doing it, that's something we can be proud of, all of us. Before our generation, today, our generation, next generation. So we need to come together. I came from far now because I know the going date is very close. Then I say, "I have to come and appear there." I know Lee is there, I know Baines is there, Suraj is there. All these places I know. And that man is there. So we are, the stronger we are, we will win. The way they say, if we, if we lose the next one, you have to bear and keep going. Let the wheel roll. And gold lost the best, not us. We will win, all of us together in it.
Mr. Basra?
Hello. I, I think most of the points have already been raised, but I still reiterate them that, as everybody said, that our councillor, our leaders, they have went upon dividing this community on the racial lines, on the basis of nationality, religion, and what else not. So it's our duty, whether after this case, whether we win or lose, but we must stand for the community. And they should not be allowed to divide us. We are united. This is a exemplary situation in Southall. We are a, just a picture of the United Kingdom. That all these people are living in this town peacefully, in unity, in harmony. Nowhere else you can find that. We shouldn't let them distemper with this. Other point, I, I just want to ask the councillors, if they ever meet you, ask them when they are selling this building, that if ten thousand people of Southall community use the substance of this Town Hall, what better explanation they should have not to sell this Town Hall? So there are other issues, the Southall, the issues of hospital, even paramount. There are other issues in the community. Our unity, and we should involve more people, those who are not here tonight. As we say from the religious temples, they, they should also, if we tell them, if we request them, they, they can also be helpful to us. So whatever numbers we can raise, that then the councillor, then the leader will be fearful that this community is united, they cannot divide us. Thank you.
Any last comments before I sum up and to close everything? No?
I just meant to answer a question.
Go on.
At the last, at the last meeting that we had regarding the Labour... A lady brought this question up about the memorial that was on Orchard Avenue regarding Blair Peach. We've never discussed this. Apparently, the councillor...
Everybody's thinking about the fortieth anniversary coming in, coming next year on twenty-third of April. So there was, on the tenth anniversary, we did put a memorial, a plaque, on the ground which got desecrated and got removed. So, we have to think of how and where the memorial is going to be put. I mean, I, I also did the Lawrence stuff. And we had memorial where Stephen Lawrence was killed. And on a regular basis, some races were desecrated and urinated in Southall. So you need to find a safe place to get that plaque or whatever it is, whatever shape or form the memorial is, to get it on perhaps at the next fortieth anniversary. I'm sorry, is that a question?
No, I wanted to say something.
Okay, do you?
Yeah.
Come here, come here. It's linked to this question?
It's linked to it all.
I'm linked to everything, yeah.
I'm linked to everything, yeah. No, my name's Laura, and I'm from Hamwell. And I was housed in North Kensington four years ago. And North Kensington, 15 minutes walk away from me, is Grandfellow Tower, as you know. The community's response to the fire has been phenomenal. It's a community in trauma. Every day, people's emotions are up and down. But we survive through creativity, through art, through music, through dance, through drama, through talking to each other. I myself have, every week, I have a community afternoon tea, which is paid for out of my benefits. It don't cost much, and just for the community to come together without emails, without, you know, any paperwork, without any form filling, without anything, photography, cameras, CCTV, and all this kind of thing. So if the people, I know that we are in a severe situation in terms of the fact that, you know, these people have been murdered, massacred, basically. But if we can respond in trauma, then I'm sure this community can respond, you know, with the creativity that it has here and the reputation it has here as a vibrant, colourful, you know, kind of community. And, you know, all this stuff about council can't afford it and that. Trouble with these people is all they do is they fill in, you know, boxes with numbers in. If every person in Southall paid 50p or a pound, you know, you could raise that, you know, you could raise money. It's not about that. This is about dividing the community for the future. So all I'm going to say is, I'll bring the spirit of Grandfellow with me, you know, just do everything that you can to raise the profile of Southall as the most amazing place, you know, it's unique in the whole of the UK. You can do it, I'm sure we can do it together.
Thank you, Ravi, thank you. I think what we should do is have a meeting about Southall Bligh Beach 40th anniversary, maybe in two and a half weeks' time. Email everyone, and then get people together to sort it. Because there are plans being made by different individuals and organisations now. And there are also plans about the television programmes, very, very, very similar to what happened with Lawrence stuff. So we can share that information and bring people together. Perhaps we can even pick up a date at the end of the meeting, and just have a meeting here. If there's no objection from Jan Baal and all that stuff. Just two or three things that I just want to say to sum up. It's absolutely important. And I know people have made the point about going to every single Gojara, Masjid, and Temple to get their support. Well, I have gone to every Gojara, and others have gone. The issue is not about, do you support us? Do you support the right of a public asset, remain in the public hands? And the, and the discussions I've had with them is, they think they should buy the place, or they should buy it. You can't have a campaign based on people not agreeing with that process. So of course we should go to the temple, of course we should go to the Masjid. And the three Masjid's actually provided all the support last week. It's a principle we support the idea of a public asset. And so I think that's a very fundamental principle. It may restrict some people coming here, but we have to be inclusive so they can participate in meetings, so we don't stop people coming in. It's very, very fundamental. I don't want to lose that focus. Because if we start losing that focus, then we're on a very slippery road. And what happens to this if we win or lose? And I think we need to establish that, Julian. Now, Ravi, there's a problem with any of us on that issue whatsoever. The second is, the legal strategy and the public campaign has to be the synergy. One may not exist without the other. Obviously, we can have a campaign, there's no legal strategy. But actually, we'll be exhausted, or we may not win, and we haven't been able to persuade local councillors and deciding. So I wasn't, maybe think, maybe too over critical about councillors. But I actually fundamentally believe that if Julian Bell and other councillors had understood what we were saying, or agreed with what we're saying about this principle of a public asset, it would take them one minute to revoke the decision they did. One whole minute. It doesn't require more than that. It doesn't require them spending huge amount of public money, which is ours, to defend a case which is ethically wrong. That's a very fundamental principle. And actually, ethically, it's not supported by their leadership. So it's not even, it's actually against Labour Party policy at the moment. So it's not as if they are going against the grain of their own policy. So my criticisms are based on, on councillors, on actually existing Labour Party policy. If they are going against the grain of national policy, I can understand that means, it's not bad. And you know, we have to stop talking and making excuses to councillors and such. I'm not saying we go and be personal about them. But there is a time that will come, even in this campaign, where you have to decide what the next road is. And I'm not saying we become personal about them, but we'll have to take on a section of the Labour if a decision is not made in the way that we should be. And I mean, you know, Jarpa's already alluded to, it is actually the leadership who instructs the solicitors. They are the clients. And the solicitor's advice at the moment is actually a very, very meaningless advice. They haven't argued the case properly on equality impact assessment. Actually, much worse, they have lied about the equality impact assessment. They said they've conducted it and they not disclosed any single document which pretends to be part and parcel of that assessment. They not disclosed it at all. Say if they had conducted it, if they'd done it properly, we'd had a witness statement which reflects and connects with the findings of equality impact assessment. Nothing, absolutely nothing. And they tried to be, they tried to lie to us by saying, "Actually, we thought about the community and social value of the town." Actually, later they would have said that. They could just decide on commercial, and we wouldn't be able to challenge it. So they say, they conducted the quality assessment, which is not done in Ma'awi, there's no documentation, which was, and they said they considered the social value of the town, which they need to say. But they said it, thinking nobody's going to challenge it. Again, not a single document exists which shows any information going to the leadership, whether they considered it, and what basis they made it. Absolutely nothing. Now, I think we have to, I know they are fantastic on the health service, and I think, put on them that they are trying to save the health service or the hospital. But you have to take them on, because I think their treatment is very akin to what we are saying. I also worked in Grandford, by the way. To the treatment that is meet it up, historically, the residents who kept on talking about their health and safety issues at Grandford. And the North Kensington Labour Group kept on putting them down and down and down and down. That is the evidence that we face on a daily basis from councillors. And I'm not individualising it, but they have a, they have a duty and a responsibility, and a moral duty to represent people in Southall. This problem is not created by the Tories. It's not created by the Liberal Democrats. It's not created by the central government, or the junior health keeps saying it is a central government. The cuts, which actually is due £59 million. But actually, they have a reserve, they're trying to buy the police station here. How can they afford to buy a building when they're on service? Say it doesn't add up. It doesn't add up. And I think fantastic that people have come together and said, "We will not take the message that we give." And it's actually not me, I know people have mentioned it, it's actually Jan Baal, Jose, Ravi, Balas, Indraji, whoever's been a kusa, I'm sorry, you keep putting your hand up, even you, kusa, you know, everybody here. And I think the central message is, yes, we want to be inclusive, but we can't disagree with the principle of public asset. Because if, if we are going to retain it as a public asset, whether it's as a social enterprise or whatever it is, we need to have that discussion properly. So I think the legal case on Wednesday is a fundamental marker for us. The decision hopefully will go in our favour. Yusuf has reminded about God, I believe in our strength. It is our strength and our determination and our imagination and our passion and our commitment, which will actually get us through. I wasn't challenging, I was just adding to it. So I think it is actually what we do on this world which changes things. We can't rely on other people, simply whatever. So I think, keep strong, let's be there on Wednesday, and let's meet again next week?
Yeah.
Are we meeting next Monday or?
Next Monday, hopefully.
Should do. So if, I think we need to reflect, I mean, my, my sense is that we may not get a judgement on that one. But, and there are permutations of whether we will or not. But I can't, you can't be, you can't be, you know, absolutely guaranteed that we'll get a judgement. 50% chance of getting a judgement at the end of the day, but 50% of a reserve judgement. It totally depends on whether the performance of the Ealing barrister is going to be as bad it was in the last year, or actually improves. Right? And it depends on another thing, which nobody has control over, even Almighty, whether we got a right will judge or not. If we get a right being judged, we are 50% in the dump, without even starting. But what we have done, and we didn't want to leave any, any, any chance, or any stolen. We have managed through our listeners to fight hard with the Legal Aid Board, despite all the cuts that are taking place, to get a QC, a Quins Council, and a junior councillor fighting on our side, who I know will fight. And in fact, Jan Kar and I and Mr. Paul will meet him tomorrow. So we work out the gravitas of the barrister. So not only do we have the legal and the moral arguments, we will have presence in court. And that's actually what we can order to, we can't do more than that. And we have the purpose. So there are four things you need to win a case, and you're taking on the establishment. Remember that. And it's not easy winning against the establishment. But we've done everything in our power to bring people together, to treat people equally, to people to participate. And we have to continue this trend over the years. So thank you for coming. Thank you, people, for having me. See you next Monday at the same time at 6:30, okay? That's it?